All right. Once again, welcome everyone. And our agenda, Mr. Donlan, are you aware of any changes we need to make?
There's no changes to the agenda, but I do want to let folks know that we have two separate meetings tonight, our regular board meeting followed up by data workshop.
Indeed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve our agenda the way it sits. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Agenda is as you see it. Minutes from the previous board meeting are in board docs.
Joe, there's a mistake in the minutes. Item number seven B, it says that I made a motion and Tracy seconded it, but Tracy made a motion and I seconded it.
Okay. Can we flip that? Duly noted, we'll get that corrected. That notwithstanding, are there other questions on the minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve them, or do I have that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the noted correction.
I'll second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Annette to approve our minutes with the correction that we noted. Questions other than that? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. And following up that, we'll have our vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $1,687,852.85 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Annette to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount enumerated in the motion. Does anyone have questions on those? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Then also clearly passes. The public comment sheet was in the back of the room as you walked in, and I do not have anyone signed up to speak to us, so we will move past that. Rich, you're up next. Superintendent update in this time in the month is Red Hawk highlights.
Yeah, with our principals sharing information at our data workshop, we're not, I don't know a lot for Red Hawk highlights. I think the one thing I want to note is that our director of building Brown, Stephen Schatz, has said that our summer projects are going extremely well. You may have noticed in the high school, a lot of action in that front parking lot. The roof that is over the front portion by the office and the tech office and a few classrooms has been replaced at this time, but all of the projects have been, all the summer projects have been going extremely well. They kind of dive into it really hard when summer school is done now in July. And Stephen will be coming to a board meeting probably in early September to give the board an update. If you recall, he earlier had shared the pictures of the items that were going to be worked on over the summer, so he'll kind of bring up before and after look at some of the summer projects that are taking place across the district.
Okay. The only highlight I would mention for folks is sort of outside of the school world, but parallel to some degree, is the Rock County 4-H Fair opens tomorrow. Spend a great deal of time there, but so do lots and lots of Red Hawks. We have lots of staff members down there in volunteer roles through the 4-H and FPA programs, and lots of our students are taking part in that. So please feel free to, please feel invited to come down and see what wonderful things the kids in our county can do.
Okay. I would just like to thank whoever does the social media, because I got to see the press box go on today. So good job, Carrie, thank you. I don't get over here as much. I did drive by yesterday, but being in Jayville, so it was really nice to be able to see that with the video, so appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, indeed. Okay, now we'll move to committee reports next. First up is Rick with HR.
Okay, thanks, Joe. The HR committee met last week on July 18th. First item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on proposed additions and changes to the employee handbook for 2425. Last August, the board approved the updated employee handbook. Since then, the HR staff has been working with USI to look for necessary changes due to legal updates or to integrate district policies and practices. Attached in board docs will find the proposed handbook updates that the HR committee is bringing forward for approval tonight. If approved, the HR team will get these updates worked into the existing handbook. Also attached in board docs is a copy of the entire current handbook, if you would like to look at that. Chris, anything you want to add to that?
Nothing else to add.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments about any of that?
Chris, was there any issues with the staff on any of these changes? I met with Sarah Breckdell earlier today, and we went through those. No, as of the majority of these, like memo outlines, it is clarity for staff that have brought up these questions and concerns throughout here. Thank you. So that's the purpose of it, is to provide that additional clarity.
Chris, I'd like to thank you for the clarity on the nutrition, the team that was very helpful, so thank you for making those kinds of clarity for me.
Of course.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee handbook updates as presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve the updated version of our employee handbook. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Clearly passed.
Second item on the agenda is update on the 2425 staffing FTE. The memo in board docs speaks to how the HR department has traditionally proposed its staffing plan to the board, wanting to get proposed change on how the administration would like to bring this information forward to the board in the future. At this time, I'm going to ask Chris to kind of go over this a little bit and talk about reasons why it's going to be done in the future.
Absolutely. Thanks, Rick. So like Rick shared, this is a, we're, administration and the HR department are proposing a change to our staffing plan, so going forward, we'd like to be able to bring our FTE counts for all our employee groups to the HR committee after the school year begins and to the Board of Education prior to the budget approval in the fall. And the history behind this is that there's a lot of changes throughout the hiring season. As HR begins to post more positions, starting in as early as February and continuing all the way up until the first day of school, we would like to be able to align our positions that we need after our students or the alignment with student enrollment is known. And so with that, we would be asking for, to bring this information to you to review after the school year has begun. We'll know what our staffing enrollment is for all of those grade levels and the needed staff. A lot of times throughout the hiring season, we do have changes and we have new students moving in, students with IEPs that would maybe need a one-on-one aid. And through this proposal, we are looking to align with the 1202 staffing report as well. So this would mean that the information that the school district admin shares after the third Friday count in September with EPI would be the same FTE that the Board of Education would approve. Currently, approval is done in the September, spring, or the early summertime, and then any changes that happen throughout that from when the 1202 is completed, but the third Friday count in September, those changes would be in addition to what the board has approved. So this looks to streamline our process and provide accurate data to the board, to the HR committee, and to DPI, and these numbers would be then consistent.
One thing that I'd like to add or reinforce that Chris shared is that while the proposal with going official action by the board in September, that wouldn't be the first time that the board is hearing about what our plans are. We begin working on our staffing plans with all our principals as soon as we get our January student count and use that to finalize our projections for enrollment for the coming year. So as we're working with the principals throughout February and into March, and February and into March is kind of our timeline where we really dial it in, because the end of February is the deadline for people who are retiring, staff members who are retiring to let the district know. So we really dive in in March on what play, what positions we need to replace, how we align our enrollment to, or how we align our staffing needs to student enrollment for all of our different employee groups. And if we're looking at any significant changes, we'd be bringing that through the HR committee to the board throughout the spring and the summer, and just waiting until September for that final approval on the number of that team.
In addition to what Rich is saying too, in the memo is a draft FTE table. This is what we would envision this report would look like to you in September for your review. So you'll see year over year what our FTE has increased or decreased by, and then be able to show you the transactions that took place throughout the year.
On that document, it's up on the screen here, you can see the two bullet points below that table highlight where we are right now as far as potential changes from last year's staffing to this coming year is it's looking at a reduction of 1.69 FTE as special ed aids, and that's due to students graduating and moving out of the district, and in addition of 0.17 FTE for instructional aid at Northside. Any questions or thoughts from board members? It isn't something we'll bring as an action item, and we had a good conversation on this with the HR committee.
All right. If everyone's good, we'll put a bow on that and move on.
That's a pretty term.
All right, and thank you, Rick. Another committee that's been busy is the Finance Committee, Mr. John.
Thank you, Joe. We got a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, July 18th. There were three items on the agenda. Those items are part of tonight's agenda as well. First up, Stephen Schatz discussed the varsity baseball renovations. This is a reference to the field behind the high school. Stephen shared the field will be getting two dugouts and stadium lights. This is made possible because of a very generous and significant donation by Mr. Tom Campin. Tom was a graduate of Milton High School in 1978 or '79, I'm pretty sure. But on behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank Tom for giving back to our district. I would also like to thank Stephen Schatz, Jeff Skewak, and Jeff, Jeremy Billard for their efforts. That's really it for the baseball. I don't know if you guys have anything else?
Ross has been working really closely with Tom too. And anything else that you want to add to that agenda?
As of yet, we have not received it, but as soon as we do, we'll bring it on the next board agenda for his donations and the campings as well.
I think one other thing that I would add to that is that the donation is covering the entire cost of the project, so it's something that's going to really benefit our youth and high school baseball program and make an impact on a lot of kids' lives in Milton, so we're extremely thankful for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to send a shout out to Tom and really the entire Campin family, the whole family's extremely generous, longtime Milton people. They do a lot more than just the stadium lights, they give out scholarships. So thanks to the entire family.
Yeah, I'd like to add for that. Tom's a high school teammate of mine, so very, very gratifying.
Yes, it's very, I mean, very thankful. And what did they say it would be, is it for next season?
Should be ready. They're working on it yet this fall, and it should be ready for the spring season.
Very safe.
Yes, indeed.
That's first part. Second item on the agenda was budget amendments for 2324. Budget adjustments are submitted to the board for approval at the end of each fiscal year. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ross, and he can share some of the adjustments.
Sure. So in the memo provided, as well as the schedules attached to board docs, we're near completion of our fiscal year, and as we get those items closed up, we have the budget amendments that we do for housekeeping throughout the year to address budgetary changes within areas such as building on budgets. But primarily, the primary changes that I want to highlight in the memo here is that the revenue expenditure adjustments are approximately $560,000. On the revenue side include changes to our investment earnings, state adjustments to current unit home and school fund or library warrants for 2324, and revisions to state and federal grants. The expenditure side of the budget changed by also $560,000 and is associated primarily again with state and federal grants, but also reflects adjustments within the budget within the $120,000 series function on the schedule to support our 403 catch-up contributions. Also, last fall, when we were discussing one-time maintenance projects and technology upgrades, we had identified some additional transfers to 146. At the very next board meeting, we discussed with the board and the Finance Committee and subsequent board meetings, the bleachers currently being constructed at the high school, so that budget amendment is captured in the schedule as well. These revisions support all the activity and all budgetary accounts for 2027. We have not yet recorded all final year activity, we just have to book our year end transfers in our final grant claims, but that is where we stay at this point. For '27, similar story, $62,000 change in revenues and expenditures, mostly tied up with federal grant changes.
Any questions on that? It is a recommended action tonight, so if no questions, I'll go ahead and move to approve the 202324 budget changes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve the changes to update our 2324 budget in the numbers that Ross just went over. Questions from anyone on those? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, John, roll on.
All right, last up, we have the different referendum scenarios, and also talked about the community focus groups. Ross put together a presentation that is in board docs and will be shared tonight. This is not for board action tonight. However, the discussion and feedback will get Ross, Rich, and the admins a direction on what they should put together for us at our next Finance Committee meeting, and then at our next board meeting, if it's necessary, we will have a vote to make on the referendum.
Okay. So we just wrapped up our series of three community focus group meetings. The meeting was targeted to inform our committee regarding the state of school finance in Wisconsin and what factors locally impact future budget developments. We covered how the state funding model is approximately $3,300 under the rate of inflation, and there are significant differences across district lines. The state's share of funding has fallen in the funding model and continues to be governed by the revenue limit and remains the only component still in use from our original funding model at the state level. Locally, we've been able to demonstrate a continued decline in our taxation, our mill rate. Our mill rate has gone down approximately $1.77 since the 1920 school year, about a 20% decrease. Finally, our district expenditures are primarily staff-based and represent above 70% to 75% of our operating budget. The remaining portions of that encompassing most of our service costs in the budget represent required but less controllable costs due to that and other pressure in most areas as well. Real quick, I want to turn it back to Rich to talk about our activity we had, our focus group, and some of our findings.
Yeah, one of the things that you'll see both as a separate attachment and on the next couple slides is a summary of some feedback that the community focus group gave for us to bring back to the board. Before we look at that, we have a couple folks in the audience who are members of the community focus group for one or more of the sessions. I want to thank Dan DeFord and Heather Miller for being part of the community focus group, and then a number of our admin team and board members were at those meetings. At the last community focus group meeting on June 26th, participants were asked for feedback on the questions that are listed here on the board, and we wanted to share, make sure it was available to the public. We obviously won't go through all of these, but one of the questions that were to ask was what were the key takeaways that you had? And the community focus group split up into four different groups, and bullet points here are a compilation of the feedback from each of the four groups on that topic of key takeaways, and Ross spoke a little bit to some of those things in his introduction. The next slide was what questions do you still have? And you can see listed there are some remaining questions that people in the community focus group had. The next slide was a question on what are some concerns that you have moving forward? And the last question that we asked for feedback on was just moving forward, what are any additional thoughts that you have? So I feel like we got really good feedback from the community focus group. We had a number of board members that were hearing that conversation as it was taking place, but we also want to make sure that we're alert to the things that they share. Ross hit on some of the main points moving forward, but I think that it was really valuable for us to have that group together and to get information and input and feedback from them. Before Ross goes into some of the budget planning that we want to walk through with the board, is there anything on the community focus groups that folks have questions about? Or could board members who are part of that group, anything else that any board members would love to share?
I think just a reminder that those videos are still out there that can be watched and reviewed if you didn't have a chance to attend.
I'd like to thank those that did attend, the feedback is really valuable to the district and appreciated.
I'd add that no matter how many times I hear about it, school finance is complicated, so ask questions. It's good to ask, because I have to ask three and four and five times sometimes.
Turn things back over to Ross then.
All right. So just to reiterate some of the talking points, not just from the focus group, but we find ourselves, as we look past the 2425 school year, which we will be addressing and approving later this fall, we know very little about future state budgets. We already know where we stand nationally compared to inflation, but the only data point we think we know is an increase in per people amount of revenue of $325 per pupil. This has been established for a 400-year period in the current state statutes, but it remains to be seen if this will be challenged or amended in any future years. Even at this stage, there's still control, Ross can draw up at about 1% per year, and based on reasonable assumptions and experience locally, our annual expenditure will increase at a rate of 3% to 4% without any major changes. This means we have an existing structural deficit of about 2% to 3% each year. If our current referendum of $2.5 million on recurring expires, without some kind of new revenue source identified, our resources under revenue will all close to 5% at the beginning. The variances in the next couple of this slide are beginning to appear rather quickly. You can see on this chart that even after building in a $325 per pupil estimate into future budgets, we have an anticipated $3.8 million deficit the first year after the current referendums. If that $325 per pupil does not hold in future state budgets, these variances compound much faster. Very briefly, and we will come back if we need to, but on the next slide, I want to highlight some data points from our recent changes in tax rate. On this slide, I've indicated the years associated and representative of the bottom of the $77 reduction in tax rate over the last four years. Finally, I want to look at, as we consider future options, including a referendum, it bears discussion over what types of referendum are available to Wisconsin school districts and the pros and cons of each. First, I want to talk about a recurring referendum. Recurring referendum adds a dollar amount to the revenue calculation in the year or years in which it's authorized. These amounts carry forward into future budget years and become part of the school district's base revenue. This can be established for a desired level of funding for consistency over time, it has the benefit of increasing the student multiplier in subsequent years. Future state, I'm sorry, future state budgets could impact a recurring referendum authority since we are a low revenue district, and with increase paths, we may choose to vote for approval. Recurring questions do create a perception of permanency that needs to be considered, but they still have an absolute solution to structural deficits problem here. Non-recurring referendum also adds a dollar amount to the revenue limit in the year or years in which they're authorized, but they do not carry forward in future budgets. Benefit of these is that they define a needle where identified period of time without establishing permanency. It is not impacted by changes in low revenue ceiling and remains above whatever the local multiplier is in the base revenue formula. The challenges with non-recurring referendum is that it does not address structural deficits beyond the years impacted and will require revisiting authorization when they expire. So with the community focus groups, the participation in mind, and the types of referendum in place, Rich and I and the rest of the administration will be discussing with the board options leading up to the next board meeting, in which we would have our last real opportunity to make a decision if we're putting in a referendum question out this fall.
I'll probably go back a couple slides and just see if there are any questions from board members, or because I think it's important that people understand the data that's being shared here. So on this one, it's starting in the 2526 year, and you can see in the red, you can see a projected deficit for that year, and then that deficit growing considerably when the $2.5 million non-recurring referendum expires. And then on the next slide, wanted to highlight, especially on that bottom row, our mill rate history going back to 2019, 20, you can see it was $9.26, and every year since then, it has dropped to its current, spotward, $7.49. And we know that that mill rate is impacted by two things. It's impacted by our levy amount and also by the property value in our school district. And as the property values grow, if the levy stays stable, that mill rate goes down, or if the levy grows slower than property values, then the mill rate goes down. So we had a good conversation in the Finance Committee meeting about this topic, and I think there's a shared understanding that something needs to be done. And really, the bottom line is that, Charlie, if you go to the slide before that one again, as we get out here, especially in '26, '27, with a projected $3.8 million deficit and then continuing to grow, the ways to address that are either by making reductions to our spending, and that's a very significant reduction in our spending that would have a large impact on our students, staff, and programs that we're able to offer, or to ask the voters for additional operating revenue. We know that the system that the state has in place has created a reliance, in a way, on local operating referendums. There's a large majority of the districts across the state have either a recurring or a non-recurring referendum in place, and we, especially being a low revenue school district, are finding it harder and harder to compete for staff, which is our largest expense. Ross has shared a few times that 70% to 75% of our costs are for salaries and benefits for our staff, and without the revenue that other districts have, it makes it harder and harder to offer competitive salaries and benefits.
Thoughts from anyone?
Go ahead. I'd like to, you know, thank the administration and the committee for bringing forth all this info, and also thanks to all the people who came to those meetings that we had. I think it's pretty clear that we need to do something. I think if you look at this slide, and you're going to look at some pretty large deficits, pretty dark, which scares me. You don't have to look very far, look at districts near us, look at some other budgets and things that they've had to do, cut things or lower opportunities for students, and it's going to have a big impact on our students and our staff and our families and opportunities available for our students. I think we need to, you know, we have to remember reminding people that mill rate was what happened to that. I think at the last referendum, we didn't do a good enough job of telling people what was going to happen to that mill rate, because it, I think we do a good job watching that mill rate, and I think it was just this big assumption that it was going to increase crazy, and that wasn't the case. But I would like to see the committee and the administration bring forth some different options. I see the pros and cons of both the recurring and the non-recurring. Guess.
I just, when Peter commented, I made at the community focus group, and those of you that have been following along, this will be repetitive to some degree. Rich commented that lots of districts are doing these, and of course, that's true. We are one of those, right? We are, we are living in year nine of a 10-year window, such that we had a five-year non-recurring referendum coincidentally for the same dollar amount that the second five-year referendum was approved for. So we're in year nine of that 10-year window, if you will, and I know we made comments back, sort of transitioning from referendum one to referendum two, if that's the right way to characterize them, that we would take a look at things when that time came. Well, that time is upon us right now, so this is not surprising to any of us. I mean, this is a very normal point in time. I mean, this is a very normal point in time to address this issue and for us to explain to the community, which we hope we did with the community focus group, what our situation is and how we've gotten to where we're at. And then we will propose solutions, and committee and/or the board will sort of sift through those based on the feedback we've gotten and what we've learned from the broader group of folks. And presumably, I can't speak for the committee, but I'm presumibly able to propose a solution because I think it would be derelict of our duties to plow forward and assume some five or six million dollar deficit, you know, down the road. So none of us have that goal, of course, so that would not be any path we would follow. So just wanted to let folks know that we are following a very predictable path for a number of years now. The numbers may change a little, but the need to do so and the structure by which we do it is very much normal for us and for many others.
Just to share a little bit more on what the next steps would be in that timeline, we would, the board would need to make a decision on if we're going to bring a question to the voters and what that specific question is. If the plan would be to bring something in November, that decision would need to be made at the next board meeting, which is August 12th. So in the three weeks between now and then, we're looking to schedule another Finance Committee meeting on either August 1st or August 6th, and to look at some different scenarios at that meeting and then bring either a proposal from the Finance Committee or a couple of options from the Finance Committee to the board on August 12th for the board to consider.
Anyone else with thoughts on how we crunch the numbers?
I got a thought quick. As you look at that, you see some red up there, but I think as a district, we should celebrate where we're at. You know, I've been on the board, this is my third year, and I follow other districts, I talk to other board members, and there's a lot of other districts that their cliff is a lot steeper and bigger than ours. So I think as a board, as a community, as a district, we should be proud of where we're at. We are probably going to have to ask for a referendum, but overall, I think we're in a pretty good spot. So just wanted to share that.
I think that's an important point that John brought up. This is something that hasn't come as a surprise to us, either at the board level, at the Finance Committee level, or for our admin team. It's something that we've been planning for, and we've known as a low revenue district that we have to be tight with our spending. We've worked really hard to find a good balance between providing high-quality education and opportunities for students while also being fiscally responsible. And you can see from a mil rate history and the many great programs and things that we have happening, that we've been really good at that. And some folks might say, well, you've been able to provide a great education for students while being a low revenue district and having one of the lowest spending in the Badger Conference, why can't you continue to do that? And what's happening in our district and across the state is that the funding from the state not keeping up with inflation has really created a system of have and have not in school districts. And one of the things that Ross shared with the Community Focus Group was a comparison of other Badger Conference districts and the revenue that they have and the referendum revenue that they have in place. And we've seen, especially over the last year or two, that it's becoming more and more difficult for us to find places where we can reduce to continue to make ends meet. We don't have a lot of low-hanging fruit, so if we had to make $3.8 million in reductions a few years from now, it's going to have a huge impact on what we're able to offer for our students and families.
Anyone else?
Then I would stay tuned for the date posted on that Finance Committee meeting and certainly invite all board members to that if you're able. It just allows a real in-depth discussion of possible scenarios, et cetera, so.
All right. Anything else, John?
That is it.
All righty. Roll on the end of committee reports and pushes us up to new business. Julie is making her way to the podium because letter A is discussion and possible action on student academic standards for 24-25. Welcome, Julie.
So this is an annual thing where Wisconsin State Statute says that school boards need to provide public notice of the student academic standards adopted by all of you. In this game, since 1998, school boards in Wisconsin have been required by statute to adopt and publish academic standards in subject areas, which include mathematics, science, reading, writing, geography, and history. And that is what the document was in board docs that talked about the different standards. And really, the intent of this requirement is to ensure transparency and accountability in the education system, making it clear to the public what academic standards are being used to guide scholar learning and instruction in our schools for this upcoming school year.
Questions from anyone for Julie?
I'll move to approve the student academic standards for the 2024-25 year as presented.
Second. Jennifer's motion is seconded by Rick to approve the academic, student academic standards for 24-25. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. B on new business is a policy discussion and possible approval or adoption of the second reading of Neola policy updates. Rick chairs policy. Do you want to reiterate what we've done so far?
Sure, yeah. At our last meeting, we had a first reading of the Neola updates. You'll see a list of those updates in board docs that are coming for possible second reading and approval tonight. Included in those are the, there's the new policy, the new Title IX update policy, 2264, along with three other new financial policies. I think we've all had a chance to read over those, read the emails from Neola, our legal counsel, from Rich. And so we're bringing that forward for second reading tonight. Rich, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just want to share, in board docs, the new policies are listed there, and there are three in the 6,000s, the 6111, 6112, and 6114 are replacements for the old 6111. That's, 6111 that's being rescinded is administration of grant programs, and then there's three separate policies that are more specific to each of those different parts, internal controls, cash management of grants, and cost principles in spending federal funds. And then the other new policy is 2264, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. And that is working alongside policy 2266, which is the same name, and that's based on the new federal nondiscrimination and Title IX regulations that were put in place in April. And the new policy, 2264, goes into effect for any claims of any type of sex harassment that happened after August 1st. So we keep the old policy in place, and we hold on to it for a while because if we, a few months down the road, get a complaint about something that occurred prior to August 1st, we operate under the old policy. And then if anything that we get moving forward after August 1st, we will operate under the new policy. I think the one other policy that there was a lot of conversation on at the Policy Committee, Ross had shared some information about policy 8310, public records, and there are some changes in what's required of the school districts and some different options for school districts. So we had a lot of conversation over the past few months on that, and I think that we landed in a good spot on our public records and our retention schedule for public records.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the policy updates as presented.
I'll second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Annette to approve and adopt the policies that are included on the list.
Yeah.
Sure. Questions? And you can go ahead.
So I would like to thank the administration and the school boards for dealing with the amount of questions that I had. This is complicated. I spent a significant amount of time, so I would like to say a few things. School boards across Wisconsin are currently reviewing policy changes to ensure compliance with the DOE 2024 Title IX changes. This is a complicated legal issue that is made more complicated as changes to Title IX definitions, which I know of, as the new policy is required to be implemented by school districts by '81, and there was a risk of losing federal funding unless it was executed on time. There was an injunction issued by a federal court on '72, and in a bottom-on-715 filing, Milton High School was listed specifically on the injunction. I do encourage the public to read the full order. It gains a broader understanding of why this injunction was issued. A few of the claims were that the court found that the plaintiffs were likely to prevail on their claims. The final rule violated the First Amendment, and the rule was arbitrary and capricious. Further, plaintiffs have shown irreparable harm with respect to the violation of First Amendment rights. The loss of the First Amendment freedoms, even for a minimal period of time, unquestionably constitute irreparable harm, and these are quotes from that order. The Tenth Circuit has held that when a law is likely unconstitutional, the government's interests do not outweigh a plaintiff's interest in having these or her constitutional rights protected. Moreover, the regulations that are currently in effect have essentially been unchanged for approximately 50 years. Therefore, it would be of relatively little harm to maintain the status quo pending the resolution of this lawsuit. Those were all quotes from the order. It is important to note that the order does not prohibit the school district from adopting a policy or adhering to its regulations. The order prohibits the U.S. Department of Education from holding school districts accountable if they choose not to follow the regulations, and the case has been appealed to the Tenth Circuit. The final rule does not yet have regulations pertaining to Title IX mandates related relative to student athletic participation. These may not be issued until post-November 2024, but Milton currently aligns with the WIAA policy with regards to participation in sports. Their policies can be located on their website. According to the '72 order, at its core, this case involves the statutory interpretation of the word "sex" and its expanded definition, but it is important for the public to know that Milton is already bound by Wisconsin case law and the definition of sex obligations already applied to Wisconsin schools due to the case of Whitaker versus Kenosha Unified School District and Wisconsin statute 118.13. And the group policies 2260 and 5517 align with these. Though this policy update does require expanded definitions as well as training of all staff, which is an additional requirement to our educators. As there are changes related to this ruling coming out on a daily basis as recently as this past Friday, 7/19, Mr. President, I would like to make the proposed amendment to this motion. I would move to approve all policies as presented with the following exception for policy 2264. With respect to policy 2264, in the event of published changes to implementation deadlines set by the U.S. Department of Education or any stay on the regulation issued by the U.S. Appeals Court, implementation of this policy would be paused for future board action. This way, we are not causing more confusion for our administrators, staff, and especially our students.
So are you saying that if there's a change about the start date from August 1st to some point in the future, that before August 1st, that this would, we could pause this policy?
That's what I'm proposing, is that if, again, the Department of Education could come out tomorrow and say, we're going to move the implementation date of this till January 1st. So if something happens between today and August 1st, if the Department of Education moves the date, or if the regulation is paused by the courts, that this policy would be paused and not implemented on August 1st. That is what my motion is proposing.
So if there are no changes, August 1st would deliver?
It would deliver, yes.
Okay. Tracy's proposing amendment to the motion on the floor that would need a second for us to change the motion in that regard.
I want to make sure that I and that the board understands the amendment. Can you read that part again, Trish?
Absolutely. Move to approve all policies as presented with the following exception for policy 2264. With respect to policy 2264, in the event of a published change to implementation deadline set by the U.S. Department of Education or any stay on the regulation issued by a U.S. Appeals Court, implementation of this policy will be paused for future board action.
I would second that.
Okay. The amendment has been properly presented and seconded to adjust our motion in the manner that Tracy just outlined. So the amendment is up for discussion.
Pardon?
Yes, go ahead.
So it goes into effect, and it's in effect tonight after we approve it, and it only gets paused if something comes out of the courts?
Yes, the way the policy is presented by the district, by the admin, it goes into effect August 1st.
August 1st.
Yes, so it would go into effect August 1st unless the Department of Education moves the date or a court system stays the order.
Today's the 22nd, we've got nine days.
Nine days.
Just to clarify what Dr. Smith said, there's two criteria to pause it, right? Just three singles.
It would be if the Department of Education comes out tomorrow and says, implementation date can be moved to, say, January 1st. That's one criteria. The second criteria would be if a U.S., if the Tenth Circuit issues, sorry, issues a stay on the regulation implementation. So if the court system deems the regulation to be unconstitutional and rules in that manner.
And your amendment specifically is either one?
It's either one, yes.
So the first one, my question is, if they give us the option to move it, but we can keep it as it is? So I'm not articulating this while giving you a second to get my words right, because I don't have any fancy words now. So it goes into effect August 1st. If the Department of Education says you can approve it August 1st, or you can wait if you so choose until this day, it would still go into effect August 1st, or it would not go into effect August 1st?
Under what I'm saying, it would not, because the part of the argument that is going through the courts is the timing of it, that it's very rushed, it's very hurried, and the districts, it's an undue burden on school districts to try to do all of this stuff to meet their guidelines. So if the Department of Education came out and said, you can pause your implementation to review your policies, get a law more specific until January 1st, then the district would wait until January 1st, would be covered under 2260 and 5517, which will already be covered, which are already covered by.
So I'm comfortable with your second piece of what the court, like that, I agree with that amendment. If the court puts a stay on it, we should pause the implementation. If the court doesn't put a stay on it, and the Department of Ed gives us more months, we already got everything in place, and we've done all of our policies, and we have all the pieces done. I don't feel like we rushed it. We spent a lot, a lot of time talking about this at more than one meeting. And so I don't agree with that, because I feel like we are ready and we haven't rushed it. So I'm okay with the, I think it was the second part of your amendment, but I'm now okay with the first part.
Rich, would you describe what the district has done as undue burden? Tracy said that the things that weren't necessary was an undue burden to the district. Would you say what is the number?
That we've done? I can describe the work that we've done, yeah. Since this came out, we've been in communication with three different, first, Neola, who write our policies, they have a legal team that vets their policies. So they immediately went to work, once the federal regulation came in place, to write policy that fits within the regulations. And we've been working with them on what that policy says, what has been happening with other districts. They strongly recommend that districts implement the policy to go in place to start August 1st, because that's what the law currently sets. But they also recommend that districts consult with your local legal counsel to talk through anything that might be specific to your school district, which we've done, and I'll circle back to in just a minute. We also work with, on all of our Title IX work, including our Title IX training, we work with a company out of, Chris, are they out of Tennessee? I see that's out of Tennessee, that also strongly recommends that we adopt this, but they also shared, make sure you're talking to your own legal counsel. And our legal counsel is running Racy and Lewis, and we've been in pretty regular contact with them to talk about not just what does the law say and what does it require us as a district to do, what would be the risk to our district if we don't take that action, and what's happening in courts around the country? And there's updates that are coming in as different courts make different rulings, which leads in part to a concern that I would have, and I really appreciate Tracy's overview. I think you gave a really thorough and well-prepared overview on both the policy, the everything that you shared. A concern is that part of your amendment talked about some inaction taken by the court, and the court can mean a lot of different things. If there's a lot... There's a lot of different courts around the country that are working on this. Some of the decisions that have been made are specific to different states. Some are specific to different schools in those states. Through all of that, our legal counsel has been extremely clear that the law says that this needs to be implemented by August first. What would potentially create an undue burden for us would be if we left here with uncertainty. If we left here saying, we're maybe going to implement it on August first, but we're maybe not because what we're going to need to do following this meeting is continue our training for our admin team. We need to begin training for our staff, which will be happening throughout August so that we can have all of that in place when staff and students return. So there's a lot of work that's going to go into making sure that we're ready to implement the law. And really where the rubber hits the road for me is that this law details the process to protect our students and staff from any type of sex discrimination. And it provides clarity, the law provides clarity for our students, our families, and especially our staff who implement Title IX. And all of our staff are, play a role in implementing Title IX. And the guidelines are in place for any type of student-to-student sex harassment. It's also staff-to-staff or student-to-staff. And in all of the conversation with our legal counsel, they've talked about the significant risk to the district if we don't follow the law. The potential for a lawsuit that we'd be much more likely to not come out on the right side of if we make a choice to not follow the law. The potential for our insurance company, they obviously will cover us if we're following the law and someone brings a case against us. But if we make a decision to not follow the law, then they may make a decision not to fully cover us or might be less likely to fully cover us. So that's some of the guidance that has come from Shayna Lewis of running the Racy and Lewis. And in conversation as recent as today, a strong recommendation that the board approve this policy as written so that we can begin implementing it. If there is a court case that comes down the road that says, at any point that comes down the road and says, in Milton, Wisconsin, you can't follow that any longer, then we would need to follow that new law. And that happens pretty regularly with our policies. Our policies are adjusted all the time because of new laws or new court cases that come up.
So can I, I want to summarize what I think you said. You said that our leader representation recommends we accept these policies as written and that as the district admin team, you already have planning place to start with training and implementation. And so you are also recommending that we accept this as written?
Yes. And one other thing that I didn't add, if the board doesn't approve it or doesn't approve it as written, it puts our admin team in a tough place because there's a law in place right now. And we have an expectation that our administrators, our staff members, everyone will follow the laws that are in place. We can't say we don't like this law or there's some reason that we'd rather not follow some portion of it. We set an example for our students and our staff that laws, whether, no matter what we think of them, are there for us to follow.
It bears repeating, I think that how much overlap is there risk between 2264 and 2266?
There's quite a bit of overlap. I would say the main places where 2264 differs, because they very much work in conjunction, the main places where they differ, there's some updated definitions. There's significant content around protections for students or staff who are pregnant. There's a few very large sections on that. There's an updated grievance procedure that provides greater flexibility to the school district. There's a change in the resolution process that allows the district to implement an informal process of resolution, which I think would be really valuable. If there is a complaint, it gives us more freedom or for more leeway to work with the complaint and the person that the complaint is filed against to find an informal resolution because the formal process is very involved when there is a Title IX investigation. And there's the enhanced and expanded training requirements that we spoke to.
So I would like to make clarity. So to your point, the undue burden was now expanded training requirements. Is that now expanded to the entire staff now versus just the folks that were initially? I thought that's how I read some of the information that was sent out. The entire staff trained on it now that they weren't previously?
Everyone is trained on it and the training is different than the training was prior. There was always some Title IX training, but there's more involved training now.
Okay, so when I said undue burden, that was where I was referring to was there was additional burden on the staff because it's more broad. And the amendment that I'm stating is that it would be if the appeals court, again, rules that the law is unconstitutional, which is what the argument is, then this would be immediately rescinded or reversed? How does that work?
Which, which appeals court?
The Tenth Circuit Court, which is where it's gone to, yes, the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals.
Yeah, if the Tenth Circuit Court or any other court determines that the federal rule is not in place for school districts, and again, right now it is. And Tracy, you shared earlier that the Kansas ruling, it was around the Department of Education. It was an injunction against the Department of Education from punishing any school districts that don't implement. But what that doesn't do is keep any students or families or staff members from filing a lawsuit against a school district for not following the law. So if a court, any court down the road made a ruling that this, the federal regulation is a violation of the Constitution or is in any way not impact, not legal, then we would follow the law and not implement that policy.
So we don't need a motion to do that. We would just do that as part of our regular practice.
We would be required to do that because we are law-abiding citizens, yes.
Thank you.
So if we want the policy now, that's more than unconstitutional, we need to take action or is it automatic?
If our policy is in place and the rule is in place as it is now, and we approve the policy to start August first, if, say, in mid-September, there's a court that rules that it's unconstitutional, we would get on the phone with our legal counsel and find out what does that mean for us? And we might have to wait in line because probably every school district that's impacted by that. And typically what they do is they then send out something right away because they monitor that and they get things out to all districts. And then we would bring something back to the board at the very next board meeting and update if there wasn't a need for any action and then update in a recommendation. We wouldn't need to schedule a policy committee meeting and then have a first read of a new policy. We'd bring it straight to the board.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but any likely court challenge here wouldn't be to the entire policy. It would be to a specific piece and this would probably get amended.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I don't want to speak to future cases, but.
They dig into the nitty-gritty of these things and get parts of them injunctive, so.
I just want to say that I have read the policies, I've read the overviews, I've read all the emails from our legal counsel. I didn't see anything from Shayna. She was very in-depth, quoted all these cases. Didn't see anything from her to recommend that we hold off tonight. So I'm against the amendment.
I'm against it because I now understand we don't need it. There's a process in place that would address the concern that Tracy brought up.
And I would second that. I'm not in favor of the amendment. I'm going to rely heavily on the guidance from our legal folks that understand this much more thoroughly than we do. And I would be very reluctant to put our district in a position where we were somewhat exposed or at risk of potential lawsuits or whatever by not complying with federal law that's, as we sit here tonight, of the federal law that we know. And of course, as it gets changed, we will have to adopt or amend. Any other comments?
My thought on second, second, on her amendment was not so much not agreeing with the policy, but just the timing of it, right? Like, I started this six-hour rabbit hole, I think Thursday, Friday, and a lot of confusion. There's a lot of frustration not to start staying across the country on this policy change. So, Rich, let me ask you if, if, before we got here, if they changed the start from August first to January first, would we pass this motion tonight? Let's just say that the change wasn't for August first, but this morning they said, okay, we're going to give you districts more time to make a change January first. Do you think we would have this, would this be passed tonight or would we hold off?
Are you asking if they gave districts an option to start or if the law was changed to start January first?
Yes, let's just say the law changed this morning and said, hey, you know what? We're going to bump it from August first to January first.
If the law was changed, then we would follow the law.
Right, so I think to Tracy's point, if the law said tomorrow, like I would say, we're going to change it from August first to January first just to give you districts more time, do we now start August first or do we follow that January first date?
If my motion is successful, we would start August first.
But if the law changes and the law comes out and says that the start date for districts is January first, then we would follow that law.
Well, we don't need an amendment for that. He would bring that to us and we would make that adjustment.
Correct.
Correct. And that was my concern, is ever-changing. It's since last week when we met, we got through emails, it's changed three or four times, not, not, some parts of it, right? So that was my thought. What some districts are doing is they're having a meeting, a special meeting, July 30th just to prevent any changes that could happen. I don't think you want to do that or need to do that. But if we, I know that tomorrow or the next day, the dates change from August first to January first, if we bump our start date with that, then I'm okay with passing it tonight, but.
We can address that if and when, if and when it comes, we can address that. We don't have to determine that today. Today, we need to follow the law.
So one thing I want to call out, and it was in one of the emails from Legal, was the reason that I pushed this out was to stop whiplash. And I think that was Shayna's word. So if the board, sorry, the Department of Education wants to wait until, it would be after the election because if not, now you're whipping districts through different policies. That was why there's the possibility of them kicking it to January first and saying, we're just going to wait until after November because if they put this, we have this policy and then we have this policy, then if there's a change, now we're going to have this policy. It's very burdensome to the districts to continue to change it. So that was why I was putting that out there. But if you're saying that if the Department of Education tomorrow comes out and says the start date for the new Title IX changes is January first, then this policy wouldn't go into, back until January first, then we wouldn't go ahead and execute this regulation on August first just because we couldn't?
Right, we literally couldn't. If the law changed and said this doesn't start until January first, we wouldn't even have the authority to start it prior to then.
We would be violating the law at that point, too.
So it's really, I think that's a really good question because that's always something that potentially could happen. We work within what the law is right now. And if there are changes to the law, we adjust, but we follow the law.
Another question, so assuming this passes tonight, there's no changes, it starts August first. Do we need to adjust policy 2264 with the dates of events prior to August first?
We built that in at the policy committee meeting. We talked about that and then in our draft, after the title, there's a parenthetical saying, this is for cases that occurred prior to August first, 2024. And then the other policy is for any cases that occur after August first of 2024.
Thanks.
Final comment from me is I just, I think the work of the healthy conversations, the complicated issue. Lot to digest here. And I think it's great we're talking, getting through, playing out these what-ifs. This is what we're supposed to do. I feel much more comfortable when I go hear your comments. I appreciate your information.
I want to share that Tracy has had a series of questions that she's emailed me and I appreciated that conversation. We visited last week for a while and talked through some different scenarios and then had some good conversation that I hope is, it's gotten, I think, both of us thinking about how we would implement the policy.
I absolutely appreciate those conversations with you. And again, these are, these are not just, these aren't the easy conversations. And the hard ones are the ones that require, you know, having those conversations, understanding the differences, getting clarity, because I'm not a lawyer. I appreciate all the time that Legal has spent as well to give me some clarity on things that I didn't know. But I encourage, you know, those that have questions to do some, do some of their own research. So thank you again very much for your information.
Okay, just to be clear, we've got an amendment on the floor first. And if there are no further insights or questions on those, we can vote on the amendment, which is to amend the original, the original motion is to adopt the policy updates as presented. Tracy's amendment would suggest that we do that with the exceptions that she outlined there. And I think we're all clear on that. It was rather lengthy, I won't repeat it. But so to be clear, we're voting to amend the main motion. If that fails, we'll come back to the main motion. If it passes, we would vote on the motion as it's amended. Just so everyone's clear, that's how this works.
We will call.
You sure can. Okay, so on the amendment, which is, which the motion is to amend the original motion in the manner I just described. If you're voting yes, you're voting to amend it. If you're voting no, obviously you're voting to not amend the original motion. I'll go to my left. Ted?
No.
Jennifer?
No.
Joe is no.
Rick?
No.
And Tracy?
Yes.
And John?
No.
And Annette? That is six to one, amendment fails. So that brings the original motion back to the floor, which is still debatable. Does anyone have any other questions or concerns on the original motion, which is to adopt the policy updates that Rick highlighted and is included in its entirety in board docs?
We will call.
You have. No other questions from folks? We'll roll call the amendment of your policy updates and I'll go to the other side. Or Annette?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
And Ed?
Yes.
That is six to one, that motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. President, point of order.
You do not have a chance to make a point of order.
The two presenters that presented tonight, they weren't getting as much of order. I'd like to put that on the record. Thank you.
You don't get to make public record.
Thank you.
This is not a meeting of the public.
Thank you, sir.
This is a meeting of the school board in a public setting.
Thank you, sir.
We can be silent. Okay. Miscellaneous A is action on staffing reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve the staffing report. Does anyone have questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. B, meeting rates, Mr. Donovan?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is three weeks from tonight on Monday, August 12th at our regular 6:30 time here in the PDC. We have a Transportation and Safety Committee meeting that is on Friday, August 2nd at 2:00 PM in the first floor conference room. So Transportation and Safety Committee meeting, Friday, August 2nd at 2:00 PM in the first floor conference room. And then, as mentioned earlier, we're looking to schedule a Finance Committee meeting. Kylie has reached out to committee members with some, asking about availability on either August 1st or August 6th. So if people can either get back to Kylie or do we want to look at schedules right now and see what's available on either of those two dates?
First is a Thursday, is that right?
First is a Thursday.
Yeah. Is that four?
That's four of finance.
What friend did you warn on the first again?
Whatever time, whatever time people are available.
Oh, I replied, didn't I?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Sometimes you forget.
We have a commitment with the Student Council folks over the meeting hour. Middle of the day. So if it's later than that, I find.
I'd have to be the first after 5:30. What was the other option?
Six.
Six. Six.
You said after 5:30 on the...
Yeah.
Does that mean at 5:30?
5:30 would be okay. If we're doing it in the evening, 6:30 works better for me than 5:30. Not to be picky, but a little tougher.
If all three can make it at 6:30 on August 1st, Ross, does that work on your schedule? Because we need Ross there, too.
Yeah, we do.
Why don't we do that, and then that gives us the one that button right up against the next week when we need to get the agenda ready, because that would be a, at that meeting, we'll be looking at different scenarios, both potential OBR reference, and either building a recommendation to bring to the board, or a couple options to bring to the board.
We're saying the first at 6:30?
First at 6:30.
That doesn't work. I'll let you regulate the voting.
That's all right.
Any other dates, are we good?
That's it.
All righty, I move away, Jared.
Second.
Thank you. Rick's motion seconded by Tracy, I think I heard.
Yep.
To Jared, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote, or we're adjourned. Five-minute break, and we're going to start our data workshop.
We'll arrange tables. But I think we can get that done on the table.